Okay, we're welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Second. Okay, call room.
Commissioner Patrick.
Here.
Commissioner Burnt.
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Chair Johnson.
Yes. Are there any amendments to the minutes?
Did I not say no?
No. I don't think you did. But I say yes, but no, you didn't say.
Well, Commissioner Knop.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I did hear, well, did you have something you wanted to change?
No. I just wanted to be recognized.
Oh, okay. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
I shall move.
Second. Call room.
Commissioner Knop.
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Burnt.
You bet.
Commissioner Bennett.
I was not here.
Chair Johnson.
Yes.
What about me?
Commissioner Kerr.
It's like a blind spot.
Okay, so third time, I'm gonna get it.
And moving on, this is a quasi-judicial hearing regarding the public hearing and consideration of SR 19-03, request by Phil Chek and Associates for a setback reduction extension to allow the renovation of existing single-family residence. The applicant, Phil Chek and Associates, on behalf of the property owners Janice and Jillson Donnelly, are requesting a setback reduction, extension for the approved setback reduction, SR 18-05, on September 27, 2018, for 148 North Larch Street Tax Lot 04603, MAP 61019 D E, located in residential motel zone where Cannon Beach Municipal Code Section 17.16.040 standard requires a minimum five-foot side yard setback and a 15-foot non-street side setback. The request will be reviewed against Section 17.64.040 setback reduction, time limit approval to setback reduction. Does anyone object to the Planning Commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any member believe he or she has conflict of interest or personal bias? Has any member had an expedite contact or made a site visit?
Site visit.
Site visit.
Okay, staff report.
Yes, so I, Jeff Adams, Community Development Director. I passed out the previous application, which was approved back in September of 2018, and that was for front yard setback from 15 to 12 feet reduction and a side yard setback from 15 to 5, and it was approved with the condition of no short-term rentals. And so now they're asking for an extension to that. The criteria for that, of course, is 176440, which says authorization of a setback reduction shall be void after one year or such lesser time period as the approval may specify unless a building permit has been issued. However, when requested, the Planning Commission at a public hearing conducted pursuant to Chapter 1788 may extend authorization for an additional period not to exceed one year. So you guys have the ability to extend it for one year. And the applicant has stated there were the death in the family and delays to the estate, and so that's why they're requesting the change. And so I believe the applicant is here tonight, and they can speak to that. Any questions?
So, I, the question I had, I guess, was, this is a kind of odd way of extending something. It's property that's in holding catter, and it's not clear to me if we had one of the same property owners applying for the extension or...
We have, it's, this Chek and Associates, I think, was the same, I believe, the same ones that brought the original.
Same contract, not the owner.
Yeah, the owners, it verifies on the county assessors, and so we can, we could ask or condition it upon, you know, an approval by the owners, a letter of ownership, support letter.
Well, I mean, my question, I guess, is, you know, I have, you know, no background in property law either. I was just curious if, if this extension is going to one of the same people who had their names on the ownership.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, so once that, the new estate came in, you know, it does this, is it being requested by that entity? So what we can do is, you know, in other words, if you question that, you guys could condition your approval upon that verification of that with the assessor's office.
The question is, is does the, does the permission to, you know, for the setback reduction run with the land, or does it run with owner?
Yeah, with owner.
So that's a legal question, and I think you have to ask this city attorney.
And that's, that's my sense.
I don't know the answer to that. In this setting, I don't know what it would be.
How many of the commissioners were on the commission when this first one?
I was.
Okay.
I was not here.
Okay. Hi. Okay, so I'll...
Yeah, so, you know, so, yeah, four of us. Okay. Okay, any other questions for staff? Any additional correspondence? I guess not.
No.
Okay. The pertinent criteria to consider are noted in the staff report listed on the criteria sheet on this door. Testimony, argument, and evidence must be directed towards that criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or municipal code which the person testifying pleads to apply to the decision. Fairly raised issue accompanied by a statement of evidence sufficient to afford the decision makers and the parties and our community to respond to the issue concludes material based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request and opportunity to present additional testimony, argument, and evidence regarding the application. The Planning Commission shall grant such request by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written testimony, argument, and evidence. Persons that are going to testify need to be recognized by the chair, state your full name, mail, and address, and if appearing in a representational capacity, identify who they represent. Is there presentation by the applicant?
Thanks. Hi, I'm Naomi Schissel. I represent Phil Chek and Associates. We're a design build firm, and we represent Jan and Jill Zan Donnelly. So Jan Donnelly, oh, I'm sorry, my address, I put the address of my firm, is that okay? 148 B Avenue, Suite 100, Lake Oswego, Oregon 97034. And we represent Jan and Jill Zan Donnelly. So Jan passed away last fall, actually shortly after our hearing, and Jill Zan, her daughter, has, is the one that requested us to come back for this extension. She would like to complete the, it's basically a roof replacement and just upgrading the interiors of this little cottage for her mother's wishes. And I don't know the legal part of what the ownership is, but I do know that Jan's estate has been in probate, and so that's why they're asking for the extension to be able to complete this project. Yes?
I notice that on this new application, it says the purpose of this request is to allow roofline modification to accommodate a loft area. That wasn't in the first request anywhere. There's no, I can't find anything about a loft. I believe the first request was because they need to replace the roof and to allow, it says this setback reduction will allow homeowner to obtain a permit to replace the roof. That's what it says on the first application, and there's nothing on the first application about a loft area.
If you look at the plans from the first application, there is a proposed loft.
But it's not on the written part of the application. In other words, it says nothing on, it just says to replace the roof. This setback, it's on page two of three of the original application. It says this setback reduction will allow homeowner to obtain a permit to replace roof. Okay, it doesn't say anything about a loft area.
Which, and when we proposed this, this is just a preliminary design, and it hasn't been approved by planning, and of course, our design would have to be approved per code, whatever is allowable for this zone and everything. So this was just a preliminary idea, but the most important part was to get the roof approved, because to even replace the roof, since it's within the setbacks, we have to get the setback.
No, I remember it distinctly, and I remember that you have, you needed to replace your roof, and that's why we said, well, okay. But here's what is really bothering me, is that when you look at the written substance of this, there's two different justifications for doing this. The first one was to replace the roof, because that was the only way you could really replace it.
Right.
And the second one, this new one, talks about the purpose, and I'm reading this on page two, the purpose of this request is to allow a roofline modification to accommodate a loft area. So, that's why I'm just confused, because I don't...
I don't believe we wrote that.
That's what it says on...
Where is it?
Okay, it's on Cannon Beach Planning Commission, general information, page two, summary and background.
So that was not written by us, that was the summary, I'm not sure.
Where did that come from?
I'm not sure.
Is that in your staff report?
Yeah, I took that from Mark, that's Mark Barnes's staff report from the previous one.
That's one of the reasons I asked the question of how many of you were on the commission, because I suddenly saw this loft as being something new.
Yeah, I do too, this is...
Yeah, if you, if, the findings of fact is actually where that comes from, and I'll read the findings of fact in the record. It says, background, this matter came before the Planning Commission on September 27, 2018. For public hearing, the applicant requested setback reduction to accommodate remodeling of a single-family residence at 148 North Larch. After taking testimony and closing the hearing, the Planning Commission voted to approve the requested setback reduction subject to the condition that the dwelling not be used for short-term rental. The subject property is a 40-by-50 lot with frontage on the west side of North Larch, as shown on the aerial photograph at the end of the staff report. The existing residence is not conforming with respective front and rear yard setbacks. The purpose of this request is to allow a roofline modification to accommodate a loft area. Like the existing roof, the proposed new roof will encroach into a minimum setback areas in the residential motel zone, RM zone, Section 172040B. Proposed roofline modifications are shown on GP2 of the application materials. Maximum building height for pitch roof in the RM zone is 32 feet, 172040E. The proposed roof peak will be about 19 foot, feet above grade. The subject property is in the city's residential motel zone. Minimum setbacks in the RM zone are 15 feet on the street sides and 5 feet on the non-street side, 171240B. Setback reductions are authorized under Municipal Code, Chapter 1764. Approval requirements are excerpted in the staff report in these findings. And that was Mark Barnes.
I told you to get that.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, I'm looking at this application, okay, and...
The original application.
Original application, which is what we're being asked to extend, and it does not, it says the purpose is to, because the house needs a new roof. I'm not saying that I think it's a bad idea to put a loft, and I'm not even talking about that. I'm saying that it has to, they have to conform, you know, we can't have, you know, this narrative that doesn't conform with the application.
Well, yes, I mean, if somebody turns in an application, they present things within the meeting that it does not exactly only, only hold within an application. They may have other documents or other materials they present. We often have people presenting the materials, and so that's given as evidence, and like the minutes, we could take the minutes and look at the minutes as well and verify that that was said, so that's often part of that.
It would just be great if it said here, the purpose of this...
For hers, for the new one?
For the new one or the old one, or, you know, they should, in other words, it's, I don't think it's a healthy situation when you have an application that says you want to replace the roof, and that you want this setback reduction to replace a roof, and then have a narrative saying it's to build a loft. I don't think that that is good, because it's not, you have to have, the two of them have to be co-persettic, and I'm just, if this said, setback, if the, if the application just said you want to replace the roof that is in poor condition and build a loft area, that would, that would solve the problem. That's not what it says.
I...
Do you see why that seems very, I mean, it's, it's the appearance of...
Of slippery slopes.
Yeah.
Well, I, I would say that you have that in your plan. I mean, they presented that in your application.
You shouldn't have to read a plan to get the whole purpose of why someone wants to do something. It should say it in the narrative. I want to replace the roof and build a loft, not, I want to replace the roof, and you have to scramble through, you know, somebody on the outside looking at this isn't necessarily going to look at the building plans, and they're going to wonder, what, what, why did they do this? And that's all I'm saying. I'm just saying that it's, I don't think it's good policy to have those two things not match.
Can I say something?
Yeah, hold on. As I remember, I was asking questions about the loft in the first meeting, because I was asking some questions about where they were going to have the ladder or the stairwell. So I know it came up, but...
Yeah, I think that that's why Mark then had said that and put in the findings about, and also pointed to it in the conditions about short-term rentals, because there was a worry that this loft would add the ability to do a short-term rental, and that's why they put that condition in there, no short-term.
And that's great. I'm just saying that the application should match, I think that's a transparent, good policy. You shouldn't have to look through the plans to see what else wants to happen, what the other motivation is. I'm talking about the motivation for asking for this. The motivation is not just to replace a roof, it's to also build a loft, which is fine. I'm not saying that that's not a good thing. I'm saying that should be reflected in the application right out front. And I think it's not good policy not to do that.
Exhibit 810, for this time, the application for extension does talk about at which point Jillian intends to move forward with the remodel as approved by the Planning Commission.
That's how I knew it. Yes, I don't remember all the details of this. I remember the roof line, but I'm just saying that we need to, that one should match the other. We shouldn't have to go looking through plans to see what it is. I just don't think that's transparent.
Go ahead.
Just, my interpretation of getting the setback reduction was that that simply allowed us to even do any construction on this property. But as far, and I don't know about the local jurisdiction, but we, we're from Lake Oswego, and so whenever we do a project, even if we have to apply for a special condition, the actual building permit has to meet the local code. So, and this is a very preliminary plan, this isn't a construction document, and, you know, if we present this to the building department, and they say, well, actually, in this zone, you're not allowed to have a loft, that would supersede the decision-maker. So in fact, maybe not having the loft as a part of this, I mean, if the loft was approved in writing as a part of this setback reduction application, then would we be able to build it no matter what the building code said? I, I mean, I don't know, maybe this is a protection that it's, you know, we can, we can do the roof, we can do the remodel within the setbacks, but then it still needs to meet the building code.
I just, the reason it bothers me is, and I understand what you're saying, it's just that, as a planning commission, we look at motivation, we look at why somebody wants to do something, not just the fact that they want to do it. And so that becomes a very important factor in a decision, and that's why I think it's good to have it in the application right up front. Then you know exactly, okay, we want this roof thing, because we want to do a, we want to add a loft, we'd like to add a loft. I'm not saying we're approving the loft because we're not the building people, but we want to know what the motivation for wanting the roofline changes.
And we did talk about that in the last meeting, and that it wouldn't be a bedroom, it wouldn't have a closet, it, you know, it's not intended to add an additional...
Right, but if somebody who wasn't at that meeting, or me, who forgot that, looks at this, it doesn't make, I'm like, what? You know, and, and it shouldn't be, that should be right up there, and say, oh, yeah, right, that's right, they want to. And I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying that the process bothers me. But I'm not, has nothing to do with what the substance of your request is, I'm talking about the form of it, I don't, it bothers me because I think it's not transparent.
And that's kind of what bothers me about not knowing who owns this. You know, this, this hasn't been settled yet. Is, is...
Jan.
So Jan...
Who, who's the person who died, right?
Yes.
Is this her child?
Yes, this is her daughter.
And the daughter's name is?
Jill Zan.
Okay. And that's on the original?
Yeah, so I believe they were both on the original, so now it's just Jill Zan acting on behalf of...
Actually, it was just Jan on the...
Yeah, that's...
Oh, was it just Jan?
Yeah.
I was reading, I brought it up.
Okay.
So it said property owner name, Jan Donnelly, on the original application, and now it says property owner name, Jillian?
Jillian.
Jill Ann?
Jillian.
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 So those are two different people, and I get, that's why he's asking that, they're not...
And the estate has not been settled, correct?
I don't know if as of today it's been settled, it had not been settled when we requested the extension, because that's why she needed more time.
I don't, I don't think you can act on it until we know if, if the original permit runs with the land or runs with the owner.
I would say, yes, you can act on it, because A, the, if you remember, the conditional use permit, which is also under the zoning ordinance, it runs with the land. I've yet to find anything that in our zoning ordinances that specifies it goes with an owner. It's all, everything that I've ever seen is, runs with the land. That's the problem we have with the bed and breakfast thing. It runs with the land, doesn't run with an owner, changing them, that's usually specified in there, and we can't find anything like that, or we've ne, we haven't found, and we, we looked at that. I've run it by Bill just to see if I got anything back from him, but I haven't yet. But that, that's mine, the second thing, you can always take action on something and condition it upon that of being, you know, validated, you know. So you can always make a decision and say, conditioned upon the approval of, you know, whatever Bill finds or whatever in the, in the code, so...
So if someone gets a conditional use permit, and then they sell their property, that conditional use permit will apply to the, to the new owner?
Yeah, that's what happened with the bed and breakfast.
Well, I remember that, but that, yeah, I also remember that was sort of really murky.
Yeah.
So, that doesn't, that's no comfort to me.
This is before the point of murkiness, so, let's actually, we don't go murky again.
Well, okay, do you have any more to add?
From my understanding, Jill Zan would just really like to upgrade this little cottage in her mother's memory, and that's what I'm here to represent, so...
But, but she doesn't really own it right now, right?
I honestly, I don't know.
Well, when she owns it, then we could extend it, right?
But it has to be within a year.
Yeah, a year.
Yeah, in a year, and if that's not...
But how can, how can you expect us to approve the extension if we don't know who owns the property? Or you're saying it doesn't matter?
I would, my, my understanding of our code is, it's, the ownership doesn't matter. You, you have the right to extend that with that whoever comes in and owns that, and they still have to buy that, no short-term rentals, I mean, so they still have to buy by the condition of the decision, but they don't, you know, it won't matter who owns that property.
Could we approve it, contention upon that person?
Actually, I mean...
Have you any?
I think that's just weird.
Now, that one is, that one's a, I would not know that. I, I don't think you can, because the ownership's not the question.
Well, I guess, I don't think it's our job to worry about who owns something that we're going to act upon, and I don't think we have to act upon something if we don't know who's actually getting the extension. I mean, a design firm, you know, is, doesn't own anything, I mean, it's, they're just contracted.
Well, I guess I'm thinking, do we want to extend this for, for another month?
You mean table the decision?
Yeah.
Might be that we need to table it for more than a month, I don't know, at the property's finished time.
Well, I guess what I look at is, I'd rather table it until we figure out what's going on, than find out it's screwed up someplace between now and...
Can you come back in a month and let us know if, if she now owns it, or what stage it is in probate, or where, where things are, so we can feel confident? And, and in the meantime, maybe you could get Bill's new opinion about that, because I think that's important. I mean, I'm not saying I don't trust you, I'm just saying...
No, I agree.
I'd like to hear it from a land use attorney.
And I'd also like the, the next, yeah, if, can you condition something on the owner one, it's interesting.
What?
What would answer my question of whether you could make a contention upon?
Yeah.
I don't know. That would be a nice question to be answered.
Yeah. As long as we can still request the contention, even though it's passed.
I don't see that either. You know, I have worked in jurisdictions where it will say within, you know, you can have that, you have to do it before that runs out, if that's your question.
Which is what it says in the, in the code, so... So we're already on the true end of that. So I just want to make sure that we don't...
So how, how much longer before it runs out?
No.
Well, it says, if you read it, it says may extend authorization for an additional period not to exceed one year. It doesn't say, you know, to, you have to ask for that.
The original said, um, the original approval...
As long as you request it.
So this approval shall be void after one year. So this was dated September 28. So, but when we applied for the extension meeting, we were told that it, we could do the October meeting instead of the September. So we're actually already outside of a year.
But you've requested it. And that's all it asked. Yes. It's asked for you to request that. And so you've requested it. So, you know, you have until, um...
You're not like we are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, yeah, I'd say you can make a motion. I'd make the motion and table it and, you know, it's, you know...
Yeah.
And I'd also, remembering answering the question before I go, I wasn't here at the September 2018 meeting. Does that preclude me from voting on an extension?
No.
Okay, let me, let me just finish up this and then we can get a motion. Are there any other presentations by proponents? Any opponents? Okay, then does somebody want to make a motion to, to table this for...
I move that we table this request in order to answer three questions. One, does an extension or does a conditional use or a, sorry, does it run with the land or does it run with the owner? What's the relationship there? That's number one. Number two is Barb's point, which is...
Ownership.
Ownership. Can you do a, make a contingent?
Can you make a contingent on ownership and approval? And number three was, who owns it? Like, is it still in probate or does it have a, you know, a new owner, legal owner?
I second that.
Any further discussion? Okay, Paula Brohm.
Commissioner Burt.
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Commissioner Knopf.
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick.
Yes.
Sher Johnson.
Yes.
Yay!
Is there a motion for the chair to sign the appropriate orders?
I make a motion for the chair to sign the appropriate order.
I second it.
Commissioner Bennett.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Commissioner Knopf.
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Burt.
Yes.
And Sher Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, then finally...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we approve this?
Actually, actually, all I did was, the only reason I put it on there for tonight was just to kind of present it to you guys. Tell you that we'll put it on the next available agenda, which I think will be December because of notice with it. It does have a section that will affect the zoning ordinance. So with that, we have to go through the DLCB's notification thing. So it probably won't make it onto the November agenda, but it will be on the December agenda. For public hearing, okay? So, yes.
So I have a question. And now I'm speaking as a representative of the Parks Committee. The city council did not adopt our new park code, which is mentioned in this event policy. So I wonder what, so we have to bring it back to them again. It was what, things they didn't like. And we address that in this policy. On page, like line number...
What page?
Page three.
Yeah.
Page three, lines 21, 22, and 23.
And Barb, this just mentions the park code. So whatever's active with the park code, it doesn't tie it to a specific section. So this is just saying the park, you know, you guys have to abide by the park ordinance. So...
Okay, so, but my question is the sentence that's in red.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's what the city council didn't like.
But what didn't the city like?
Yeah, you're right. They did ask, yeah, you're right. But they didn't.
Except when I'm wrong.
Was it they, they were...
They would like the parks available, all parks available for permits.
Oh, okay.
And this says what we wanted.
Yeah, yeah. Well, no, I didn't want this.
Oh, that's true. You did. That's right.
So I would just scratch that on the next, when we bring it before you guys, scratch that red one.
But I thought, I, um, could we just refer to it that the special events on the parks will follow the park code?
Yeah, I think that pretty much...
That would put it here. Then, then we don't have to delay what we're doing.
I just put it in the present tense.
Well, I have that. I have that already. See, up there above. Remember, we just added that. So...
Also take out...
Just take out the red, but leave that all events conducted since the park also, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. And I also added the, all the red is added. So that next page has that and at least one resident liaison conducted by the Parks Committee, appointed by the Parks Committee.
I would like to return to that. One of the things that kind of bothers me about this whole document is that it's, it doesn't really allow for a whole lot of resident or business involvement in these decisions. And I think having one resident on a committee that's filled with essentially the staff of the city.
What page are you on?
Come on.
We're on, yeah, page four, line number five there in that committee.
The last time I think I suggested that we ought to have more resident involvement in this process. And that led to a change to one resident, you know, that's appointed.
I mean, it does say at least one resident.
I know it does say that.
Yeah, but that might mean just one.
Exactly. I'm getting your heart.
Not a half a resident?
No.
But I guess I, I feel a little more comfortable if it said two.
I agree. I do.
Are both from parks?
No.
Appointed by the parks.
Okay, okay.
But they could be a member.
They could.
Right, yeah. But they better be a resident.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Also, but that, we say that.
And it could be one resident and one, you know...
At least two residents. That's just...
That's good.
Yep.
Okay, and then on that page seven, I put, "All official city functions are exempt from fees. Any registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit may seek exemption or reduction in the fees from the city council." I think you guys have asked for that, nonprofits.
I'd like, I guess I don't understand why it's just not automatic that there's no fees for nonprofits.
If it's a nonprofit, they don't like, they'll say, "You have to pay." And if it's a nonprofit, they do like, they'll say, "You don't have to pay."
Well, that thought crossed my mind as I wrote that down.
Which, so do you all have thoughts on that? Would you prefer seeing all or like I have?
I would like to say all residential or registered 501(c)(3) will have no fees.
Okay.
I agree.
Yep. Because you don't want, you want it to be as subject as possible.
Yeah, that's very funny.
Yeah, 501(c)(3)'s have a broad political range.
But quite a few of them have in their bylaws that they can't make political contributions.
No, but there's...
Correct, exactly. Why? Okay, I see what you're saying.
Okay.
Lefty American. KKK is not a 501(c)(3).
Well, I don't understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
We're working on it.
Let us know at the next meeting.
Anything else you guys see on that?
Well, you know, I fussed and I reread this thing word for word and reread some of that again and persecuted myself. And I thought maybe I would point out a few things you might want to consider. Like page two, um, my can. I think you really mean closure of a city street, not close a city street in that line.
You mean, you caught something that Bob Lundey didn't catch?
Well, Bob Lundey is just furious and comments.
You should have, I mean, I've got, I've got his copy that I went through with markup, so...
But he didn't make any...
Technical, just, you know, grammatical and...
Top of page three, line two. We're in singular and all of a sudden we turned into waterways. Public eat, public park, public waterways, street.
Okay.
I think we have, that's...
Great.
There's a great deal of tension to definitions of terms and so forth. And on page, on page three, line four, "Any other organized activity." What does organized mean there?
Not random.
Not random. You could, you could have lots of, lots of disorganized, organized activities.
It means planned, I think, in this context.
In other words, you can go to somebody who's the chief puma of the organization and that would be something that was organized by the chief puma.
Or the representative.
Well, I guess, you know, "Any other activity conducted by a person for a common or collective use" is already organized. I don't understand.
They're just saying it's duplicative. Okay.
It's confusing, isn't it?
So you're suggesting take out the word organized?
Well, or define it. Tell me what, tell me how that is different than the rest of the sentence.
I think it's easier to take it out.
Yeah, you do. On, on page four, on line 14, 15. "The special events committee shall not recommend for approval a new event for the date, time, and location." Does that mean all three are factors in that or...
Yeah. So this is saying...
You have two things going on the same day.
For sure.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I think that's clear.
Something about, what is the executive department down on that page on line 19? Or 20? Forms provided by the executive department. What is that?
City manager and assistant city manager.
So it's the city's executive department. If you put the word city's executive.
Well, why not, if it's the city's, you know, the city manager and assistant city manager, why not just state that everywhere else we talk about who's got authority or who can hand off authority?
What, what line number are we on?
20.
20. Sounds like something out of 1984.
Yeah, I can change it.
The city manager?
I get a little nervous about language slippery around the Second Amendment. Or the First Amendment. Excuse me. Second Amendment too, but the First Amendment. And line 12.
On what page?
On page six. This is a site plan including all these things. And one of which here is "Location to accommodate individuals desiring to express opinions not consistent with the purpose or intent of the event." There's this, you know, it's like an assumption that everybody's going to show up in Chicago for the 68 convention and dump acid in the swimming pools. And it's, it's so anticipatory as to be odd. And I might not put that in, yes. It tells you, tells the reader what's on your mind.
I was going to say showing our cards.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, you know, they, I know they do this nowadays to...
I know, I know.
Hold on off, you know?
And it bothers the hell out of me, you know, as I read it. You know, it's the post 9/11 syndrome.
Anybody else have thoughts or feelings about that?
It's kind of sad that we have to put stuff like that in.
Well, we don't have to. We don't.
Well, you know, there's something about Cannon Beach that, that this seems to be draconian.
Yeah. I understand, Joe. I agree. I mean, that's fine if we want to pull that. You don't have to, I'm just saying, I get a general sense that everyone's fine with getting rid of that, so...
Yeah.
But this still has to be reviewed by the city attorney.
Yeah.
Right? And just my dealings with our newest city attorney, she's going to want that in there. I mean, she was concerned about our 12 days birthday parade. Well, what happened if somebody didn't agree with us showed up at the parade? As long as, and my answer to her was, as long as they would have a motorized vehicle, welcome.
Well...
Because that's, you know...
AK-47 or something.
Right, but...
Also, this is, you know, I'm going to give you all's feedback and I'm going to buy police and, you know, so all those.
We don't like it. Let's see what she says.
Now, going down to line 15 on the same page. "Location description of all offset signs, banners, or attention-getting devices." All strikes me as a little broad. Does that mean Cannon Beach? Does that mean Seaside, All Clansett County, Oregon, the whole country, or the universe?
No, just in our city. Yeah.
I would take that to mean Cannon Beach. We have no regulation over Seaside or anybody else.
Well, it's written as if you have.
Well, we know we don't, so I think it's...
Well, we know we don't, so I think it's, you know.
Well. Okay. I just wanna be able to sign out on US Highway twenty-six.
You can do that if you get permission from Clansett County.
Well, a lot of people do it and I don't.
Right, but, but a lot of it's on. You have a duty, one hundred fifty feet ahead.
Exactly. Oh, yeah, I love language like this. On page nine, line five. Number three. Shall be removed immediately, but in no event more than two days following the event.
Yeah.
Is it immediate?
I say, yeah, yeah.
If it's, if it's two days, make it two days.
Well, we're, we're hoping it's immediately. See, that's, that's what we're trying to tell them, okay? But we know it's gonna be, we're gonna have to pull the two day on them.
Well, so you're gonna go out there and take the same.
But in no, in no circumstance.
Sure, are, are you just?
I'm just saying, you know, obviously, you know, immediately doesn't fit because, you know, time doesn't work that way. But if, if you're saying that they have to be down in two days, say, they need to be down in two days.
Removed, oh, yeah.
It makes it sound silly, I think.
Yeah, it does.
Two days following the event.
On page eleven, I don't know why this, you know, I, I stopped where I did it. On line eleven. And one of the standards is that. There's some sort of sexually oriented images. Well, I mean, I can. You know, any liquor, tobacco, marijuana, or sexually oriented images? Or related products or accessories?
Geez, that can encompass a whole lot of stuff.
Well, you know, I mean, you go to seaside.
I can't define pornography, I know it when I say it.
Exactly. I, I think that you don't have to go that far.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, and there's a lot of, you know, a lot of protest parades where you're gonna get lots of sexually oriented images. You know, although you probably wanna stop the parade for it. And then other products deemed unsuitable by the community.
That's creepy.
That is really creepy.
I'm, I'm open. Do you guys wanna write that phrase as? What do you want when, when we, there's something we don't wanna see out there on the street for sale?
Well, that's, that may just happen once in a while.
Yeah.
I don't think you can start regulating what is suitable and unsuitable. You really don't. I think that's really, that's actually opening yourself right up for a First Amendment issue.
You bet.
So, so what would you like?
Liquor, tobacco, or marijuana.
Okay.
Well, I'm not even sure about that either. I mean. There's a lot of drinking done in this town.
Yeah, but you can't sell liquor, tobacco, or marijuana. That's what this is about. Well, not in peep, and any outdoor merchandising meets the following standards. So in other words, you can't sell liquor, tobacco, or marijuana.
Or sexually oriented images.
Well, no. I'm saying take that out, cause if, that doesn't, we don't know what that means.
Yeah.
There's no way to know what that means. For some people, that would mean just a picture of a woman. For other people, it would mean a naked woman. You know what I mean? So, and for other people, it would mean a naked man. So, you know what I mean? It just, that's a ridiculous.
Now, let's not bring Mike Pence into this.
My thoughts, exactly.
Well, it sounds like Mike Pence wrote it.
No, this is both, yeah. No, I think this is Pence.
Okay, next.
But no, I have a question about the farmer's market sales.
Alcohol, liquor.
They do. That's true. In fact, I've watched them there. So I saw them.
It's wonderful, you're desperate.
Well, we can get rid of it all.
Yeah, I see. That might be a good idea.
I think so, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because if there was something illegal, well then, call the police if you don't like it or make a complaint, so why?
I agree, because then you're saying, you're saying to, you know, marijuana, well, does that mean, you know, that CBD for pets?
I don't think that's allowed by state, you know.
Yeah, but you just can't, you can't break the OLCC rules, that's all. You can't do that anyway. That's, goes without saying.
Yeah.
I think take.
Okay, I'll change that if there's another, is it, was that mentioned anywhere else? Or no, that's it?
I don't think so.
Okay.
There may be control over liquor that you can have as well, but certainly not tobacco. Unless Cannon Beach is smoke free. Similar kind of fuzziness that Bob has made on this page down on line twenty-six, twenty-seven. He must have to do with. Hours proposed for the event are appropriate to the location and do not conflict with another scheduled event.
Well, that makes sense to me.
Well, what is, what is appropriate?
Well, if you have people living in, you know, if the event is a huge wedding and, you know, at midnight they're deciding to all, you know, do Greek dancing with a live bazooki player. I mean, you know what I mean? I think that's.
Yeah, and remember, this is a, you know, this is just like a standard, a condition, so they can place that. You know, in other words, it's gonna come before whoever's the reviewing body, which is me. I can say ten o'clock if I think it's, that gives me the parameters to do that if I see it's up against residential or whatever.
But you're gonna argue what is appropriate, what is inappropriate?
Well, they can, they wouldn't argue that with me, they would argue that with you guys, cause they would appeal my decision and take it up.
You guys.
Well, to me, just. Scheduling, scheduling an event that doesn't conflict with another scheduled event is really what I wanna get out of that.
Yeah, yeah, well, that next one does say ending no later than ten for any kind of amplified. But, you know, I mean, we could just state ten as the stated time.
But if we took out our appropriate to the location?
Yeah.
And just said do not conflict with another scheduled event?
If another event got scheduled there, it's probably appropriate for a second.
Right.
And see other, it's a history of all events, events that they've relocated. I don't know, it looks like I got tired. Thank you. I'm still looking forward to it. Oh, yeah, I do, I did, there is one item up that was a little, little strange. On nineteen, I have a. A defining of signage. I didn't know there was possible to have so many definitions of signs. Line two, incidental sign means a sign. That's a good idea. Other than a temporary or a lawn sign which does not require permit. If I sit down and try to grammatically lay this thing out and break it down, I can do it, I think, to get the meaning that is meant here. But just reading it over. You know, I'm not clear which sign doesn't require permit. The sign other than a temporary or lawn sign which does not require. What does the which refer to?
I don't know, this is from the ordinance as it stands now.
Well, I can't, I'll.
Yeah, I can't either.
I work here.
I, if I was to go through and grammatically change what's currently for all of my.
That just needs to be fixed, to be more clear.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, incidental sign, you've already got these other definitions for sign. I mean, do we actually need to even have that?
Well, it's like an, somebody has an inner sign or, you know, just a small sign that is incidental.
Is it used in here and any of the other?
Yeah, well, it's used in the signage ordinance, not in ours. This is just definitions from the signage where we needed to add a couple of things like banner and, and things like that. But no, that's a.
What, what does it mean? Give me an example.
Like, you know how a bank will have inner or a restaurant will have inner or, you know, those type of just incidental signs that don't have like a, you know, Burger King or whatever. It's just an incidental sign, not part of their signage for their business. It's just a incidental tool.
Directional sign?
Yeah, directionals and things like that can be.
Park here, no parking?
Yeah.
Restrooms? Yeah.
Yeah, those kinds, those are signs.
See, I would not have had any idea that that's what that was.
Typical quotations didn't really mean the way I said it. So, at least, see, that's the case. Yeah, I got tired.
Anyway.
I'll run these. Thanks for your all's input. I'll run it by our attorneys. And I will let you guys know also on the other, earlier questions.
Okay, are we done with this item then?
For now.
Okay. Okay, so does anybody have any comments on the tree report?
I do need to comment on the trees.
What's that?
I thought you'd be commenting on the tree.
Yeah, well, I could, I guess.
I don't know what kind of trees these were. Do you know, Jan?
I haven't seen anything lately, so when.
Yeah, the one on the road needed to go.
Yeah.
That's my neighborhood.
Are they already down?
Two.
Oh, one of the new houses, yeah. Yeah, I know about those.
Okay, is that put in order? Uh, yeah, so then any ongoing planning items?
Yes.
Well, yes, there are. That's quite a bit.
I wanna ask you about, I've heard a lot of comments about that property next to the Nicklesons, the Harding's property, where they have a house and then right next to the house, there's a new structure. I don't even know what it is. I don't know if it's on their property or if it's partially on the Nicholson property.
It is on an easement on the Nicholson PD where they, they have the right to build a garage there, part of the.
Wait, Nicholson gave them the right to build a garage? He granted them permission to build a garage on his easement?
Yeah, yeah.
But what was the purpose of the easement to begin with?
Parking.
Parking for the development for the PUD?
Yeah, they just say parking easement.
So, so he's changed his plans for his PUD and now is granted the permission to put a permanent structure there?
It was there, it was part of the approved project.
No, it wasn't.
Yeah.
I, for the Hardings to put a garage up in a dwelling?
It wasn't, you know, who, who to put that there? But there was, there's a agreement that stipulates that there was a, a garage allowed in the parking, an accessory structure allowed for the garage to be placed there.
On, belonging to somebody else, not to the PUD?
It does not state that, just like I said, it just states, we ran it by Bill and, and, you know, we, we looked at it. And that's exactly, we, it does not state who, whose ownership about that, it's just an easement that allows.
Is it just a garage though? Isn't it a living, a living thing above the garage? Well, then why is it so tall? They stacking cars up on top of each other?
Well, it's just a garage. You can't have a livable space up there.
Is it a studio?
We, it can't be livable. In other words, it can't be a conditioned space. The building department wouldn't allow that, it says.
Has the building department gone to look at, to see what's above, cause it's, you know what it looks like?
Yeah, I know what it looks like.
So that can't just be a garage. It wouldn't be that tall.
It, it can be as tall as it wants. There's nothing in our ordinance that states how tall a garage can be. As long as it's below the building height.
Okay, but it has a floor and there's windows? Those windows must look into something.
Yeah, it looks into a space, but we can't say that, you know, it's not, you know, under our definitions, we've gone through all of this language with the, with lawyers and everybody. And that's what we said, we, we had no, nothing to hold them to anything else on that.
So, so in other words, there's no way of knowing if somebody's living there?
Where is this sucker at?
This is, do you know where Nicholson, the Nicholson property is?
Which one?
The PUD, oh, which one? The one where, with the, with the P, this PUD? The Planned Unit Development and the living wall? Well, up above the living wall, there is a new structure that has gone up next to the Harding's house. Janet Victor Harding, have a large house on the bluff. And next to it, right next to it, is this large structure, tall, not, doesn't look at all like a garage. And, and nobody, and everyone, I know that lots of people in the neighborhood are like, what is that? And why is it there? And how did they get permission to put it there?
So how, why is this garage?
Well, I haven't, I, I don't know. I don't, I haven't seen the plans.
We would have permission to, I mean, if we wanted to inspect it, we could inspect it.
Well, we have, we do inspect it, but that's the whole thing. You know, I can tell you I've worked in many places. Here's your problem. Oregon's building code has very kind of, you know, Oregon building code doesn't go by A, International Building Code. It goes by its own code, and so it doesn't define very well any of these things. And so here we're left with kind of, you know, we can only allow certain things. But, you know, if, if it said simply can only be used for a single, you know, story garage, whatever, then maybe we could hold them to that, but unfortunately, it doesn't say stuff like that.
What does it say? It says just garage?
Yeah, a garage.
Is, is it finished? I mean, is the project done and been inspected?
I don't know if it was final.
It's not been final, but there's been a number of inspections.
Yeah. So, you know, I know, and I know how difficult these things are. And that's why, you know, planned developments have to be, I mean, specific.
It looks like the Hardings have built a little house for her brother to live in, right on the oceanfront. And it's not, and that's not what it's supposed to be. And I'm sure, I, I'm sorry to say this, but I think someone's pulling the wool over someone's eyes here.
Well, we can go inspect it. You cannot have a, it can't have a restroom and all those other things within, you know.
What, what can it have?
It can have, it can have certain facilities. No, it, it, I don't know, we can't tell them not to have a bed anywhere. You know, that's not part of.
What makes it not a garage, I guess is what I'm asking.
A restaurant?
Yeah.
Just a bathroom, that's the only, that's the side factor.
Yeah, kitchen. Kitchen is, is the accessory dwelling unit. That's what really defines.
So a kitchen makes it?
It is, and in our, in Oregon, a kitchen is the key thing.
And so far, it's, on your initial inspections, so far, there's no kitchen.
Yeah, not that I know of.
Kitchen facilities, like a hot plate and a portable refrigerator, is that a kitchen?
Yeah, you know, I am not a building official. I can check all that for you.
Can you? Would you?
You, you, you can have, you can have a microwave.
I can only have a small refrigerator, a college dorm room refrigerator. Yeah, that would, I would like to know.
Yeah, because that becomes a place to live.
Yeah. Well, a lot less than that becomes a place to live. A garage could be a place to live.
Yeah, I know, but this looks like, this looks like.
Just too comfortable.
Yeah, you know, I think.
Drive by and take a look. You'll see, just drive by, take a look, you'll be surprised.
This is, this is why I asked, you know, earlier that I really think we have, in my opinion, we should define those things within our ordinance.
Like B and B and garage and things like that.
Like accessory dwelling and all those, many of these, like, you know, places I've worked, I mean, much stricter definitions on these things. Because like Joe said, you know, there's, people turn everything and, I mean, you start getting. Because like Joe said, you know, there's, people turn everything and when you start getting these pressures, they start turning anything really into a living unit and it gets, it's dangerous. And if Oregon's kind of fire safety code doesn't really speak to these things, then we're the ones that really have to step up and do that. And so I can look into that and see, see if any other Oregon communities are, you know, what are their regulations on that? But I do know that, you know, a lot of the mountain town communities, for instance, really have very strict language.
Did you also find out when the last time Alden has been out there to inspect it?
Yeah.
Do you have to go up the driveway to see it?
No, you can see it from the street. It's right behind the living wall.
So basically, are you suggesting that this is, you know, it looks like a garage or somebody's got a studio?
It looks like a living, it looks like a little house, it's a house.
Yeah, it looks like, it looks like there's a living space above the-
Right, that's what I'm saying.
A, a large one, fairly large. It's not like a little-
So he's not really giving this space a property way?
I don't think so.
Somebody is getting the right, have a decent living space there for a while and he gets the right to use it down the road as part of a development or- Probably to this subdivision. You know, another inspection.
It's a quick profile.
Really, yes.
I do.
So I, what I'm wondering is can we address, at our next meeting, can we address the bed breakfast? Where it's not transferable to a new owner? I mean, it's a pretty simple direction, but I think that should, we should recommend that to pass on to city council that B and Bs and properties are not transferable to new owners.
Yeah, let's go back to that to get it done.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll look also, I think I had a, I know there's a technical change that is similar to this where, oh, it's in our, about RVs and living in RVs, we have another thing where it says no one can live in a RV or something like that, or overnight stay in an RV or whatever on city property. And so we need to make a change because the RV park is city property.
With the exception of the-
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, that's all we need to do. But there's, there's a few things like that I'll look through and see that I've kind of highlighted over the year that I've been here. And maybe we do technical changes all at once and-
Can you park an RV outside of short-term rental and plug it into the house and just stay there?
Not, not official, no, yeah.
Can you if it's a private residence?
No, overnight stays in RVs. And in fact, RVs can't be parked in the right-of-way, they can't be parked in the, you know, the required front yard. So you can't, you can park in your front yard, but not in required, not that first fifteen feet, so. So there are limitations on RVs.
There, you could have an RV and live in an RV while you're building a structure too.
You can do that, yes, there, there's a-
Or remodeling.
Yeah, yeah, when you have a live building permit.
Okay, anything, anything else for the viewer? Okay, then we're adjourned.
Yay.